Order the special meeting of the Westland City Council. It's Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, and the first item of business is always is to approve the agenda for the day. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the February 25th, 2025 special meeting of the city council.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve the February 25th, 2025, a meeting of the city council's agenda. Any discussion? See no discussion, so call the roll, please.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes. So the motion passes unanimously, and we will proceed to public comments. Do we have all for Oppenlander today?
Correct.
Okay, well, then I suppose we can just proceed into the Oppenlander discussion, and we'll take public comment first. So this is a follow-up meeting to our, this is a follow-up meeting to our listening session that we held last week. Councils had some time to think about things and wanted to take some time to kind of provide more formal direction because there were calls last time for the council to take a vote, and so we wanted to discuss where we each stand and then potentially take a vote and provide some concrete direction to our city staff. So I look forward to that discussion and the further public comments. So there, before we start, I just want to say, obviously, there's a variety of perspectives on this issue, and I see folks in the room who've shared differing perspectives on the topic, who I know. So just when folks comment and share their opinions, just ask that we keep it respectful and no personal attacks towards members of the city council or other members of the public. And I'm going to try to keep comments closer to three minutes, the three-minute limit today, just because we already heard a lot of testimony last week on the topic. So with that, we will proceed to public comment. How many folks do we have signed up today, just from my, ten? Okay, about ten, sounds good. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming back.
Susan Nicholson?
She's on her way.
Okay.
Linda Parker?
Just make sure the green light for the microphones on and state your name and city residence, please. We have three minutes.
My name is Linda Parker, and I live at 6363 Haverhill Court, which does back up to Oppenlander Park. A lot of what I have to say really is just a reiteration of what many other people have said already, how this is a valuable piece of property that is enjoyed by the community, used by youth groups, and I think it has actually become an iconic point in our neighborhoods. But in addition to that, I want to talk a little bit about our first measure that we did for the first part of the pricing for Oppenlander Park. Friends of Oppenlander went out and did a lot of canvassing and talking to people in the neighborhood about the park when that measure was coming forth. We talked about the history, we talked about the area and how it's currently used, and we also talked about what the repercussion would be if it did not maintain as a park, what kind of housing would be developed there. To a person, in addition to wanting to see it maintained as a park, there was a huge objection to the type of housing that would be built there, even for people who didn't live proximal to the park, they objected to that kind of neighborhood in Westland. Since we carried that measure by a significant majority, I feel that that information to them was, in some part at least, the reason for the way they cast their ballot for that measure. So I'm hoping that the city council will agree to a second measure with the full knowledge that the Friends of Oppenlander again will go out and we will talk to as many people as we can who will listen in the Westland area, and I feel very confident that we could carry this measure again. Thank you.
Thank you for providing your thoughts to us.
Stephanie Kendall?
Just state your name and city residence, and you have up to three minutes.
I'm Stephanie Kendall. My city of residence is Westland. I grew up on, living on Oppenlander Park. I rode my pony in the park, I played soccer in the park, my daughters played soccer in the park. We, we watch every weekend as we sit on the deck with my mom and have coffee, we watch the park be used. And I just urge city council to really listen to the voters who already supported this and disappointed and disgusted, might be the word, on how I feel as a residence with the school district and the city council that it's gotten to this point. I do feel like the voters have already said they support this, and I urge us to put it back on the ballot to consider a price increase. That's all my comments.
Thank you, thank you.
Harlan Borro?
Just state your name and city residence, and you have up to three minutes.
Evening, Harlan Borro with Icon Construction, and just wanted to come and say again that, you know, we're willing to work with the city in the best way we can to try and find a compromise in case there isn't a bond or if it, there is a bond measure and it fails, to find a compromise that would keep some park because, you know, as we've discussed, the likely alternative, if it goes back to the school district, is there won't be a park. Also wanted to say that after the last meeting, the discussions that I had with folks and at the rally on Friday, you know, we are looking at and are willing to look at additional alternatives to the plan that we presented that had the two youth fields, to try and find a way to do a senior field. And there, there may be a way to do that with a senior field, either just a senior field or a senior field and a youth field, but the additional area takes further away from the number of lots that can be built. And so there'd have to be some additional creative ways of financing that, either through the city or through private funds. There was some discussion of Friends of Oppen, and, you know, raising, raising some funds and also trying to find a way to keep some of the tree area, to give up some lots for that. Just as a point of reference, you know, with the proposal we had, we were giving up about a third of the area and therefore a third of the revenue and profit that we could do. If we expand that further, that's even more. And, you know, my owner, longtime Westland resident, is very committed to wanting to work with the city and find a solution here. And, you know, just to put it in context, what we would be coming forward with as far as purchase and development cost for, say, 22 lots in our original proposal, that same amount of money, we could invest in another area, say, down in Woodburn, for example, on the acquisition price. And for the same amount of money for 22 lots, we can get 220 lots. So it's not an inconsequential thing that he's trying to do to help. So anyway, just wanted to say that. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you for your comments.
Michael Hedges?
Hi, welcome. Just state your name and city residence, and you have up to three minutes.
Michael Hedges, Westland. Thank you for listening. You know, the details of what's discussed here and what's determined and what's accomplished and the challenges and the money and all of that will be forgotten decades from now. It won't be something that was remembered or relevant. This is the opportunity to preserve, either preserve a piece of amazing earth for all to enjoy or not. That is the legacy, that is the opportunity. And so this moment in time is the opportunity to make that choice. It is incumbent upon us as residents and a representation to do everything possible to take this moment right now, to put that, whether that's putting on the bond, whatever the options are, do everything we can possible to make that happen, to give the opportunity to preserve this legacy. It is now. The details, the money will be forgotten, the details will be forgotten, but right now is the opportunity to preserve this piece of earth for the future generations to enjoy or not. This is our legacy moment. So it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to make that happen, whether it happens or doesn't, now is the opportunity. So that's all I got. Easy.
Thank you.
Roberta Staff?
Hi, welcome. Just state your name and city residence, and you have up to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Roberta Staff, and I live up on Apollo Road, Westland. And my husband and I moved here about 16 years ago, and we liked the area because it's a really nice place to live. And we didn't really know where the Oppenheimer Park was until, you know, the first time the subject came up. And we were appalled to hear that, you know, the school district wanted to buy it up and sell it off, you know, to a developer for, you know, housing. Well, that takes away from the history of the park. You know, these kids really have a place now to play ball, and you take that away and it's gone forever. So please consider, you know, opening up the discussion further and/or putting it to a vote, you know, a bond vote for the, for the community to vote on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For your comments?
Susan Nicholson?
Hi, Susan, welcome.
Thanks, Robert.
Just, you're fine, just state your name and city residence, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Oops. Am I on?
I think so, yep. You're good.
Hi, everybody. I appreciate you having us. I guess I just wanted to say, in thinking about Oppenlander and the planned, icon plan, I just want you guys to all think about the impact on the neighborhood and the city that that's going to cause. I, when they developed the neighborhood across the street, just the amount of trees there that they took down, the days of wood chipping, the noise, the compost fires, the loss of wildlife, and now the road is narrowed, there's no shoulder, and we put more traffic on that, and that's a huge concern. And if they start to go in after the old growth trees, can you imagine how long it's going to take to take those down and the impact? I mean, those are huge, huge, huge trees. So those are just, and, and leaving only three acres of park is really not what I think most of Friends of Oppenlander look at. I think we look at the opportunity to have open space where people can just play and walk and talk without being in a small, little, constricted park area. And it's, it's that that's just the freedom to just get out in the sunshine whenever we happen to have it, or even in the rain. And I use it, I, I'm a kind of semi-professional dog trainer, and I use it for doing things like laying tracks for my dog when I'm doing tracking. And it's, I mean, I know a couple guys that go out there and train their dogs for hunting, and that open space is really important to the community, and I just want to ask you guys to really be thinking about that.
Thank you for your comments, and we hear you.
Dean, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hi, Dean, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay. I'm afraid I, oh, there's my start video button. I am a Zoom person, not a web, webinar. There we go. And I apologize for all the, I'm, I'm calling and reporting in from Washington DC tonight and just wanted to thank you, number one, for calling this special meeting. I was, a lot of voices had said we want a more formal closure to the Oppenlander decision, and I thank you for that. You've heard from my fellow neighbors and citizens about Oppenlander and its importance in so many different ways over these past few weeks. I'm not going to repeat that. I want to take a little more pragmatic approach to my comments. I sent you all a written comments earlier today, and I want to highlight just a small handful of things to you and in a public fashion. One is that we, Friends of Oppenlander is not done tonight if the answer is no. We, we understand that you all make that decision, you make it hopefully with valued input and with good deliberation, but we're not done. But we're also not done if the answer is yes. As someone else said earlier, we are fully committed to not only passing this bond measure, but also to continuing, continue to support the city of Westland. One of the concerns that was expressed by the council, I think it was the last meeting, might have been the meeting before, was bond fatigue and the fact that even though this is a relatively small bond, the proposed bond is relatively small compared to some of what may be coming forth, that indeed it is another request for payment for taxes from the citizens. And we want to make it clear that we, we think this is part of what makes us a valuable city, but roads and water and sewer and the many other things that we need. And you can argue Oppenlander might be a want as opposed to a need, we're committed to supporting those as well. I've given you details on how a $4.875 million bond layered on the current three and a half gives us enough to purchase at the school district's list price plus 500K for improvements. We've, you know, we've heard from the Parks Department that we need to have some basic minimal improvements. We certainly heard about a lot of high-end improvements, but we don't even have a plan for the park, so it would be perhaps premature to do that. I, we are, we Friends of Oppenlander are also of the opinion that the bond is, at this particular moment in time, the only solution. The icon proposal is a backstop. We should continue to negotiate with them, and we heard from Harlan a little few minutes ago, and they are already talking with the community, and I'm sure they're talking with you about how they, they can compromise or adjust, adapt to some of the things that we're interested in. So that should continue in parallel or, or even in the event that there's no bond. But with that said, if there is a bond, we are also still committed to continuing the process with the school district with high leverage to get them to reduce the sales price. We want to show them that we're serious, that we're prepared, but we also, as I explained in my email, we want a win-win-win situation here, where the school district wins, the city wins, and the tax-paying public wins. And right now, with full list price, really, it's the school district that wins. In fairness, you know, the city and the, and the citizens would get, would get to have the park, but we would have, I described it as always in our pockets to make that happen. And when we go back to the ballot in November, the school district might feel the pain of the hose in our pocket when they're asking us to vote. The other thing that was brought up was that there's not enough time, and clearly there's very little time left. The decision we make tonight is, for the May bond measure is the end of the road, and yet even with that, I think there's time to make this happen. I personally filled out, using the 2022 bond, the SEL form that's necessary for this 2025 bond, and mind you, I'm not a lawyer, and we unfortunately need to review that, but basically capping and pacing and adjusting. And there's a couple of numbers that need to be, that need to be in there, you all need to vote. I'd encourage you, if you are going to vote yes on the bond, that that vote is not just a yes to instruct city staff to prepare the bond, but a yes with the, with the, I don't know, the contingency or whatever, that, that the price is this and that the cents per dollar range is this and the value of the, the appraised value of the houses are this, so that city staff can not only prepare that bond, but submit it without you all having to get involved. So with that, I thank you for the process. I'm just so grateful that you are being responsive and that you're listening. I would note that in all the meetings I've been at over the past weeks and months, we've not had a single person say no to Oppenlander. So take that into consideration. I appreciate the hard work you're going to do tonight, and I'll be watching you from decent.
Thank you, Dean, for your comments and for your efforts. Oh, that's all, okay. You'd like to comment? Oh, go ahead, Counselor Groner has a comment, then we'll move into.
Thank you, Mayor Bielostowski. A little history, two years ago, we were given a, the beginnings of agreement with the school district, but we were given an extremely short deadline in which to answer it. As a result, there was basically misunderstandings between the city and the school district, and both the school district and the city have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees trying to resolve that misunderstanding. Again, two years later, we are being given an extremely short deadline by the school district on a take-it-or-leave-it offer. Now, we have said vote, many people, I think we've received hundreds of emails saying vote now. The question is, vote now on what? We don't have a firm understanding of precisely what the deal is. We don't totally understand the legalities of layering one bond issue on top of another. So it's not just a matter of filling out forms and changing a few numbers. We really have to come to an understanding of what this is. The school district, I understand, has given us this short deadline because of political reasons that they want to have this done before the next school board elections. We have our own reasons for not wanting to jump through this hoop without looking on the other side. So I'm also somewhat offended by these emails that talk about lack of action. Well, inconsidered action is not what we were elected for. So everybody on this council, I think, wants to keep Oppenlander. The question is how we do it, and we have to do it thoughtfully. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, for kicking off our discussion here today with your thoughtful comments. And, you know, I'll just note real quick before we, to open the floor, that, you know, we have, we have received, sorry, let me get this a little closer, that was off my mouth there. We have received a variety of comments on the topic from the public, and it hasn't all been supportive of referring out a bond measure. There's been folks writing about, with concerns about taxes and the need for the city to be more cautious with its money. So I have some remarks to make, but I'm happy to open the floor up first to others if you'd like to do that. Okay. Well, okay. This has been a very difficult issue for us, as Counselor Groner mentioned, and this has been a long period of time coming since 2021. This is one of the first things I was approached with when I came on city council, and this was in February 2021, I believe, was the first time, and I'd been on a month. So we're here today with another big inflection point. And obviously, we understand how much of an asset Oppenlander is to our community. Several of us grew up here in Westland. I played baseball, and we've heard from a lot of people with their personal stories and heard from the baseball community, and I, I wish the city had been given this land back in the 1970s, because I don't think it would be being sold. But obviously, we are the buyer, the school district is the seller, and they've decided to make a decision with regard to the property and have given the city the chance to weigh in. I did have a conversation with the school board chair and advocated for the city and, you know, kind of broached, I broached the subject multiple times about the timeline, which Counselor Groner's shared his frustrations about, and it's been a firm response that there will be no modification to the timeline from the school district's perspective. So we're dealing with that situation. They've also not been willing to negotiate on the price for their own reasons, and we are, and having to be receptive of that, and there's not much negotiation there. We've got a really tough thing to balance, and we're here where we are being asked to spend $10 million to purchase a park, which is property that many have pointed out our taxpayers already own. So, and I say 10 million. Now, that's the number that we have to talk about because it represents the purchase price of 8 million plus needed improvements to make the park function and be a nice place to be. And personally, sharing my thoughts with council and folks, free to disagree, and I know members of the public may disagree, I am concerned about what putting a bond measure on the May ballot for 10 million would, to purchase the park would mean for our future bonding ability, for critical infrastructure and public safety initiatives that we've been talking about and are going to continue to talk about. And I have asked our staff to kind of compile a general list of what the critical needs are of the city, but I went through today and to college them up, okay? Water master plan, $44 million is needed for pipe replacements, 6 million for seismic improvements. We've got the Public Works Operations Center that's essential for city, city, city to function and to have these responses to winter weather events that we all need. That's 20 to 30 million. I don't know what the latest cost estimate is. And then we're talking about unknown road improvements and transportation project funding. We've talked a lot about Highway 43. A little anecdote, one intersection right now at Merrillhurst Drive with ODOT is costing $7 million, and it's not all city money, we might have a small portion in there, but to improve one intersection is 7 million. So when we talk about trying to do the Highway 43 concept plan and improve the whole thing, you know, it's going to be very expensive if we can get there. So because of the timeline that the school district has communicated, wanting the property under contract by June and the bond deadline being this week, I have, and we have not had the opportunity to have conversations about the trade-offs and support levels for spending 10 million on Oppenlander versus spending millions on other projects that are critical for public safety and our vital infrastructure. And we have not been able to do, for example, statistical polling, which I would really want to see, about like community support and the trade-offs for whether another Oppenlander measure would, would jeopardize support for those water and road infrastructure improvements, et cetera. So we don't know how the broader public feels about the financial trade-offs and where the support is. And the bond environment is really tough. Recent community college and school district bonds barely passed in the 2024 elections, including ones close to home, that see Clackamas Community and Oregon City, and many bonds failed across the state. And I want to remind folks of the other big expense, just for the record, that we've asked voters for during my tenure, and that was 13 million, for the $13 million waterline replacement at Abernathy Bridge and some other needed waterline replacements. And we asked voters to approve 17.5 million to fund those improvements in November 2022 after the Oppenlander measure, and I'm not drawing a causation between the Oppenlander measure and this measure failing, but just pointing out that a $17 million bond measure went down for various reasons, 60 to 40, to fund critical water infrastructure. Sorry, I've got a couple more paragraphs of comments to make to everybody. I have a lot of respect for the folks with Friends of Oppenlander, and I've had a lot of meetings with Dean, sir, and I heard from many community members here tonight, and, you know, this was a very difficult financial situation with a huge amount of money being asked by the school district, as we know, developer price or the, during the whole thing, we called it kind of the, it wasn't park price, okay? Up until February 13th, the Friends group urged the city not to pursue a bond measure due to doubts about whether it would pass, and we were planning to pursue a public-private partnership with some private fundraising, but the school district's new price and timeline became too much to be able to raise that money. And I understand it, and I feel bad about it, but just pointing out that this is kind of the last resort, and it's a really difficult financial situation. We're talking about a lot of money. So this would represent the single biggest expenditure I'd be asking voters for my time, and the only, one of the single biggest, excuse me, the only comparison being that waterline measure. We're in the planning process to ask the community to provide other funding, potentially for some of those critical city infrastructure needs that we mentioned. And in fact, we're meeting with our Transportation Advisory Board in the next month to begin part of that conversation, as they're going to be making recommendations about ways to increase funding for our road and transportation safety projects, okay? So in summary, I believe that referring, referring a bond measure is not a topic to take lightly, take lightly or rush, and when our city has so many critical financial needs, and as you, Mayor, I need to have reasonable confidence that placing a $10 million bond in May would not jeopardize that support for those other projects and that the community would still support those at the ballot box later. And I'm not confident in that right now because I simply don't know, and I have my doubts, but I'm based on past and what's going on with bonds in general. So given all of this, I am open to this idea of the city acquiring some of the property and improving it as a park and want to see Ballfield save. and improving it as a park, and want to see ball fields saved and improved. I want to see trees saved, and I want a senior ball field, and I wish we could get the whole 10 acres. But I feel that a public-private partnership utilizing existing resources, where we're able to retain some of the acreage and baseball facility while not getting ourselves into a $10 million financial commitment, plus, and we haven't even talked, I didn't even mention this, the unfunded operations at 100,000 per year, is a compromise that best meets the needs of community while living within our financial reality and best preparing our city for really tough conversations ahead about which critical public safety and infrastructure projects to fund, because there's not unlimited money. And even if you look at the Water Master Plan, it says $90 million in projects as the total cost at the bottom. We're never going to be able to get that amount of money for our city. So we have a small tax base of community members, and I respect that. So anyway, very difficult issue. Those are my thoughts, and I just wanted to provide those comments for the record. And I have a couple of documents to enter into the record, one being the results of the 2022 water bond measure and an article from the Westland tidings from that time, which said, "Westland to deferral water main work to pay for I-205 water lines." And it talked about the defeat of the measure in the midterm elections, meaning that the city would defer scheduled maintenance and replacement of water mains running beneath local streets. And so it's just a really concerning situation financially, and we've got to work on that. So anyway, those are my thoughts, everybody. And I know I'm disappointing some members of the public when I come down on that, on this issue this way, but I'm just doing the best I can to look out for Westland. I hope we'd open the floor up to comments. A little emotional talking about it because it's been so long. Council President or Councilor Bright?
So I did some research between the last meeting and this meeting, and I don't know if everybody in the audience is aware, but the city operates or owns 600 acres of parkland, and that does not count Oppenlander because we do not own that. So without Oppenlander, we have 600 acres of parkland that our Parks Department maintains and keeps available for the use. Now, I certainly recognize that that doesn't provide the ball fields that people are anxious to have, but that's a provision by the school district that everybody was used to for the last 40 years, and now all of a sudden, they're pulling the rug out from under us. But it makes it difficult for the city to step into that when that is not what we have been doing. And it does cost a lot of money to maintain the ball fields, even more than some of our open spaces. I also want to comment that the school district is not offering to negotiate with us on this. The school district has provided us with a take it or leave it option, which I don't think is in the best interest of everybody in the community. And there's also a cost to putting a measure on the ballot. So whether it passes or not, we have to pay the cost of putting that measure there. In 2007, the city went to the voters for a renewal of our police serial levy. It went to the voters three times and failed three times. We used that serial levy to fund the police. And when that failed, it's not like we go, well, we don't need police. We had to backfill that with general fund money. The Parks Department is funded with the general fund money, which comes from our property tax. So I think there are a lot of things to balance. As the mayor mentioned, the water line that that ballot measure failed. And I know some of the comments and reasons why perhaps it did, but if we don't have that water line across the bridge, we don't have water at our taps. And as much as we like having the green space in the parks, they won't be as enjoyable to us if you can't turn the faucet on and have water.
Thank you, Councilor Bright. Okay, Council President will go last, and Councilor Bonnetton, go ahead.
All right. I've really enjoyed meeting a number of old neighbors from Haverhill that I hadn't met before and people who live there now. I think that's been really fun. So I just want to remind everyone that I did grow up right next to this field, also playing on it, also using it in the same ways you did. I get it, okay? But I've observed in this discussion recently something kind of interesting. You're all here tonight to have this discussion with us, and we provided a similar opportunity last week. There were certainly opportunities before this as well. The very fact that this matter ever came to be is a result of the city of Westland being receptive to the efforts to try to save Oppenlander. The expectation has consistently been, though, that we bring the solutions to the table. The perception recently has even been twisted that the city is the one who will solely decide the fate of this park. Every step of the way, the burden has been placed on us to come up with the answer. The threat I've even heard recently is that if anything changes at Oppenlander, that's going to be my legacy, which is why I feel like I should offer the reminder, which has already been said by my colleagues, but the city of Westland does not currently own Oppenlander and never has. The city of Westland has not made the decision to sell Oppenlander. The city of Westland has not set a deadline to make a deal happen. Despite this confusing narrative over the last week, nothing about our meeting signaled the end of attempts to purchase it. It's also worth noting that Chapter 11, Section 46 of the city charter prohibits the city from ever selling a public park or open space without the approval of the voters. So this is not a situation we would ever be in. Cities put a significant amount of time, all of us personally have put in a significant amount of time, resources, and personal energy trying to figure out how to make something work here. That's not something people usually do if they don't want that thing to happen. But I would ask that all of you, very respectfully and diplomatically, direct much of this effort to making it clear to the sellers of this property that you'd like them to keep Oppenlander as a park. I see that they had a listening session last night, and they're going to have another one tomorrow night. Were any of you there? Have over 1,000 of you emailed them? Have you been to a meeting of theirs throughout any of this over the last few years to ask for their help? Fantastic. If not, please do. Not an attempt to shame them for the situation or imply ill will. I don't think they did this intentionally, but through this lopsided expectation and pressure, the budget issues have been shifted onto the city. I know full well, though, that the school district can be receptive to the feedback of their constituents, because I watched the public discussion over the matter of possibly closing three of our historic neighborhood schools recently. That turned into a very strong public sentiment, and many of you brought it to us, even though we didn't have any influence over it. But then I sat there at their meeting and watched them very thoughtfully make their decision to take that off the table, and that was very admirable. But what I learned from that is they are also receptive. So please, let them know that you would like them to extend this deadline and continue conversations with us. This does not need to be the only answer. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor. Council President, do you have a comment to make? I also want to give the city manager a chance to weigh in if he has, let's talk about the, any of the city's existing capital needs.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Council President, go first.
Thank you. I appreciate all of you. I appreciate hearing everyone's concerns. And I too grew up in this community. My son played baseball for 10 years, and we've spent hours up at the field. I affectionately renamed Arcticlander because of how cold it would be and snowy during baseball games often, which anyone who lives up there, I'm sure knows what I'm talking about. And I love open spaces. I love nature. Anybody who gets within 10 feet of me will hear me talk about birds or owls or nature. And so, as my colleagues have expressed very authentically, and the mayor and I have both been on this journey together for our whole entire first term of office, this is difficult. We are not the enemy. We are a family. And as I said to Dean, this is about wants, needs, and means, just like any family has to deal with. And I understand the strong want of Oppenlander, but we need also water. We need roads that are safe, safe sidewalks and walkways for kids to get to school. We have a lot of needs that are, as of yet, unmet as far as from a funding standpoint. We're going into a budget cycle, and we'll know more in the coming months. But I can, without knowing specific numbers, and maybe the city manager will fill us in on some of these concerns, but you've been hearing it from us up here. So this isn't about us not caring about the park or needing to care more or not understanding how important it is to have ball fields. I also actually worked at the school district, and I myself was in charge of a club sport team. And it was a, we could call it an unconventional sport. It was ultimate frisbee, which was a great sport for kids who maybe didn't want to, couldn't commit to full-time varsity. So I was always looking for field space for our team to play, and I could never find any field space. So I understand, and I'm ready to look at a map, honestly, and find some other ball field spaces. We also, as I said, not to digress too much, but there are a few people in this community who say, "I hate baseball." And I just want to say that if you're listening, you don't know me. And that's one way to say that you don't know me, is to share that sort of untrue and unfounded rumor. I love baseball, and I want safe, excellent, accessible sports facilities. So I've been on All Stars Mom. So our son went and played in Kelso and Longview and Castle Rock, and so, and Down the Valley, Albany. We have been to a lot of ballparks. And Westland has some of, this isn't anything personal, I know people are trying hard, but Westland's facilities are under adequate. And I've actually just talked to other coaches walking in Fieldsbridge Park, because I happen to have a garden plot there, and I'll just say, "Hey, how's the tournament going?" and just chat with them and just ask just for their opinion, you know, "How's this facility work?" And they're like, "Yeah, parking up on the road isn't very safe." So I would like better, not less, not fewer, and more adequate ball space. So I'm very grateful that we have a potential public-private partnership. I appreciate that Icon has come and are potentially flexible. What I don't want to see is to have the complete, Oppenlander completely lost, all the trees gone, and it completely built into houses. We need housing. If we have more affordable housing, we may be in a better situation to have enrollment in our primary schools, and they won't be fearing closure, which is a huge problem that I don't hear a lot of talking about in the non-school community, Westland community. But closing of primary schools is really difficult for a community to weather from a real estate standpoint and just from a community reception standpoint. If you don't have enough small or young families to feel, to fill these primary schools, that means there's an affordability problem with housing. So what can the city do about that? I want to have those conversations. So I want to keep talking about Oppenlander. I don't mean this to be any kind of a, this is the end of a conversation. I want this to be the beginning of a new conversation. But I'm very reluctant, and anybody who's heard me talk about this situation knows that I don't think it's fair that the taxpayers of Westland be burdened with developer prices for this property and then have it be left apart. And that isn't even dealing with our already overburdened Parks Department trying to take on more parkland. That's even a separate conversation. But that's kind of what we're trying to do here, is speak from a frank and honest standpoint. We care about Oppenlander, and we care about all of you, but we're just trying to solve these problems, and there's some pretty big challenges for us. So thank you for being along with us and bringing us your heartfelt thoughts on this, and we hope we can come up with a solution that helps everyone. And thank you for listening to me now. I'm done.
Thank you, Council President, and to all of the council for providing your initial comments and remarks. I did want to check in with the city manager to see if you had anything to add from that. I tried to summarize some of the capital needs of the city, but you're our financial, you're the guy who manages the budget every year, so just checking in with you on that.
Mr. Mayor and councilors, you've all talked already about the city's other financial needs. I know you've been in office for some time now, and so you've learned about the infrastructure systems that are needing help in Westland. I think most of the numbers, Mr. Mayor, that you quoted are exactly right. I was struck by, as you were talking, earlier this month, the council adopted priorities for the next two and a half years, and about half of those on your list have multi-multi-million-dollar implications, the water system, the pedestrian safety, the possibility of partnering on Highway 43 improvements, the recreation center possibility, the operations center for city facility, for the city operating departments. And so these are all projects that are either entirely or partly unfunded right now, and that's why you've prioritized them. So I was struck, just struck by the work that we have to do in this budget cycle and in the next two years to come up with plans that are, you know, I always talk about eating our vegetables, although I really like vegetables, but sometimes eating vegetables is really, really important. If we don't provide water and safe crosswalks near schools and things like that, it's hard to, it's hard to do the other systems. So yes, the transportation system plan has about $30 million in unfunded projects. The water system plan was about 100 million. The rec center is 50-plus possibly, although that's more on the want than the need in the basic infrastructure category. All those bike and pedestrian and sidewalk improvements near school that you've been hearing about from our community is a question mark number of dollars right now. We don't know, we're studying it. Those are the things that you've been hearing about consistently for the past couple of years that folks really want to make sure that we focus on. So, and Mr. Mayor, you also talked about the ongoing, this is one that, this is the one that really keeps me up at night, is we've all been watching school districts and other governments make operating cuts to staffing. We are hoping not to need to do that this year, but every year, we're looking at the competing priorities and trying to figure out, you know, are we going to, do we have the ability to add the extra cop on the overnight beat, or do we have the ability to add the extra Parks Recreation worker? We haven't been adding staff for a number of years here in Westland, and it's difficult to keep up. So I appreciate your attention to that. I'm happy to answer direct questions. Just as a reminder on the budget timeline, we should have a draft budget in probably late April, and budget committee meetings and council meetings in May and June with required adoption by the end of June.
Thank you. Council President told me she has a question for you.
Thank you for that information and that synopsis. I'm curious, partly because of the last couple of sleepless nights I've had recently listening to the wind blow and from thinking about the trees that fell on my house in 2021, what was the cost of that storm to the city approximately? If you don't have it on the tip of your tongue, it's okay, but I just remember the, how many cubic feet was that pile of debris?
It was a lot. I don't remember the cubic feet, the cost, and we were fortunate to receive some federal reimbursement on emergency in the, around $2 million is the number that I have in my head for that, the ice storm.
Was that COVID relief funds? Or was that FEMA?
No, that was FEMA.
FEMA, okay. Well, we can hope that FEMA will still be around, but I also wanted to point out that we're uncertain about some of what's coming just from a governmental standpoint and from an inflation standpoint. That's, I wanted to mention that in my comments. So that's, it's something in my mind, anyway, about how is, how are we, as a community, going to absorb some of potential rising costs, and we don't even know how to anticipate them? So do we have a big contingency in our budget?
We do not. We meet our minimums. The city is required to adopt a balanced budget, and we have policy about The city is required to adopt a balanced budget, and we have policy about contingency funds, but it's, we are, we are never much above those. And every year, every two years, we do a budget, and the four-year contingency looks like it won't be met, and then we scrimp and save and find ways to meet it.
Well, thank you for that.
Well, at this time, we can have further discussion, or this is a special meeting, so a motion can be made. Council Bonnington, did you have a comment to make?
Yeah, city manager, I just wanted to ask you about that article that came out a couple of hours ago about Metro buying the Eagle Creek Golf Course for $6.4 million. It brought to mind the fact that we are not necessarily the only government entity that could buy things. What would the process look like to try and form a partnership with maybe the county, the state, Metro, any of the above, to come up with something for this situation? Has that ever been explored?
Council Bonnington, thanks for the question. There are sources that exist out there for purchase of, most of the funds are for natural spaces in open areas. This would be a tough, this would be a tough one on that. Most of the properties that Metro buys have like significant habitat value. I'm not saying this doesn't, but it's, you know, that, they tend to buy things that are near water, among other things. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a significant exploration of that by other, by other governments. I think the way that would, that would start, if we were looking to the state or to the county, it would start by probably contact by our elected officials with elected officials to find out if there was an interest in partnering with accompanying staff work.
Thank you. Thank you. Good, good question there and suggestion. I did see that article as well. So. Do you like to, Council President, do you have a motion to make?
Yes, I will offer a motion. I move to not place a new bond measure to purchase Oppenlander on the May ballot for the reasons stated during this meeting and direct staff to evaluate and pursue a public-private partnership, or the city to purchase some of Oppenlander Field for use as a city park, utilizing existing voter-approved resources or other funding sources.
Second. Okay, thank you. It has been moved and seconded to not place a new bond measure to purchase Oppenlander on the May ballot for the reasons stated during this meeting and direct staff to evaluate and pursue a public-private partnership for the city to purchase some of Oppenlander Field for use as a city park, utilizing existing voter-approved resources or other funding sources. So time for a discussion with the council. Any comments?
I think it's worth stating again, something I've said a few times in the last week, this would not signal the end of our attempts to purchase Oppenlander.
Thank you. I'm certain that everybody has heard tonight, the financial situation that the city's in and all of the needs that we have, and I'm just hopeful that a, that this is a compromise proposal that can get us something with what we can afford, given all of our needs. And I'll just note at this time, this motion does not necessarily mean the city is accepting the Icon proposal. For the record, for the, for the media, the folks who are watching, we're going to talk and have a process about how this, how this type of thing could work and go into those sorts of negotiations. So just wanted to clarify that for the record. And any other discussion?
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, Council President Bonnington, I mean, Council President Baumgartner, sorry about the bees.
It's okay. It's okay. There's a lot of bees on this council. I just wanted to thank people again for their input, and I'm sorry for people who are disappointed. And we really have been trying to spin straw into gold up here, and so far, it's only partially working. I think we have a lot of good possibilities, and I'm here to listen to any creative solutions that anyone might have and to keep trying to please everybody, and, and we do really care. That's really what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Groner.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that until the school board accepts an offer from a developer, basically, the situation is still open to possible negotiations. And I think some of the public effort should be directed toward the school board to open up their negotiation process. This is something that we can accept.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the members of the public for being here, and also thank Icon for just proposing a creative solution that I wasn't even thinking about going into this, into the process about, you know, a public-private partnership and working within the city's means, so that came up. So with that said, call the roll, please.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Groner?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Jeremy Listowski?
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion passes, and staff have been directed, as stated in the motion. So with that, the, do you feel like you have direction from the city council on how to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that concludes our agenda. Anything else for the good of the order tonight? We'll reconvene next month to continue city business. We're adjourned. Thanks. Thank you, everybody.